Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that recess. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene. Thomas, what do you have for us?
Sure. The dimensions of the lot, I'll speak about first. And I did these measurements with our GIS, which is, as you know, not 100% accurate, but very close. It appears that the lot, and the total length, I'm talking about it as a whole, both parcels, has about 320 feet of frontage on With Creek Road, 250 feet along the side of the post office, 100 feet in the rear, the part which is adjacent to one property, and the South Town Villas continues about 190 at the bottom. Of course, there is, you know, that section where it angles. So it's, you know, you can determine that the length in the back is about 320 as well total. 190 feet on the side of the Moore Building. And then, let me get back to the site plan. It's not extremely clear in this depiction. I'll blame that on scanning and printing and PowerPoint. But along With Creek Road, conceptual site plan had the front of the building at 280 feet, 125 feet on the side of the post office, 90 feet in the rear, closest to that residential parcel, continuing at 190 feet along the wooded parcel, and then 100 feet in depth on the side of the Moore Building. I could not gather for you a height of nearby buildings. Again, how height is measured as to the midpoint of really the peak. So, you know, Cool Wave Car Wash said it was a one-story facility. Obviously, that's not a typical one-story facility, you know, in its design. And without those building plans, you know, I can't tell you what it is at the peak of that. But those are the general dimensions of the lot and the building, as you see in your packet. I'm happy to answer. Any more questions you had?
How many floors are there proposed? How many floors, how many levels are there proposed?
Three, from what I gather.
Three levels. So we're talking about a 90,000 square foot?
Yes, ma'am.
90,000 square feet. A 66,000 square foot lot.
That is correct, of course. It's, you know, 30 in its total footprint, but, you know, 90 is the assumption for space. How that's broken down, you know, between office space and storage areas, and, you know, I'm not sure of those numbers.
Questions for Thomas? I did not, I don't know if I did. I might not have closed the public hearing. I don't think, was there, if I recall, I think I asked if anybody else wanted to address the mission? Okay, okay, so it is closed. Okay, thank you. So a couple other thoughts that I have. I do understand that there are a lot of uses that could be there by right, and those were, those uses were deemed to be compatible with the characteristic of the central planning district, the central district. This was not, ahead of time, thought, okay, this is going to be a compatible use, and understand that times change absolutely. But, and I think that's one of the things that we are deciding whether to recommend or not recommend to council is, is this the right use for the right place? Or the right place for the right use that fit well within the character of the district? Those are things, I know I agree with Libby, that I'm absolutely not opposed to a storage unit. To me, it's the scale of this, and it's the frontage at that district, particularly with the sidewalk, and this being kind of a walkable area of town. And because of, because it is so impactful, I just, I take this recommendation very seriously because I don't want to see unintended consequences down the road. That's one of the thoughts that I have. I know when I was on the comprehensive plan survey team, one of the things that always bubbled up was small-town feel, small-town feel, Picousin, small-town. In our comprehensive plan, there's a lot of mention of trying to keep natural green space as we can, keep the aesthetic. So those are, those are some thoughts there. And I do know that, that next month, we would only have one more commissioner. So we know we're not gonna appoint any.
I can't speculate, but I can tell you the last time I inquired of the city clerk, I don't think that there had been a necessary number of applicants to appoint before what will be your December 5 meeting.
I can also say that I did ask some of the business owners adjacent properties about this. And that was, basically, they had the same reaction. This is huge. This is, this is a very big building. And it detracts from what they were hoping, and I know that this might not necessarily be the case, but more of a village atmosphere of the central district. And I know it's not necessarily a village atmosphere, and that there are different scales of businesses, and a mix of industrial, and there's apartments in there, and there's a lot there. But that was the reaction I got, was this is really big. Those are, those are my thoughts.
I think that, from what I'm hearing so far amongst everybody here, I haven't heard it from this lady, Kimma Lef, but the size and the footprint of the structure is the main, you're not, I think we're probably not all adverse to having the storage. To these folks that are presented, their option is, well, they're thinking in terms of financial, how much, how much they can reduce it. Only thing I can think of is that's the sticking point, and I don't know if there's any compromise on their part as to size, because then they, financially, it becomes just not a project for them. So, I mean, it's a point well taken. Size, and I kinda, I kinda think the size is the sticking point. Yes, it sorta is for me. I like the idea of a storage unit facility in there. I'm not opposed to that at all. And I realize, I realize too, that something could come in there, and if it's by right, it can be 35 feet, it can cover the whole thing, as long as they meet the requirements of stand, of offsets. I realize that. But I think the fact that what we're seeing in the, in the, in the, I guess, the ordinary picture, looks massive. It looks massive. It's probably, the proposal, the proposed picture looks massive. So you're thinking in terms of that on that lot, which is not a large lot. Because when I was reading over it over the weekend, and I've looked at it myself, I've been looking at that spot for a long time, I'm pretty familiar with it. It's relatively small. 540 is a pretty large number. I thought that too, when I was looking at it. Sort of not an easy decision, because one part of me wants to vote for it, but the size element is my sticking point too. Before I even heard y'all speak on it, I was a little concerned just for the size of the lot, and the unit is quite big. So I don't know, kinda at a point here where I'm, I'm really torn on it. I'd like to be able to vote for it, to recommend it, because I like, I like the idea of something being on that lot, and bringing in tax revenue to help people here in the community. I'm pretty pro-business with that, but that is the, that is the, that's the problem, I think, for me.
Do you think we have to have the other ones?
I don't know.
They're low, you know, they're low style, they're not intrusive looking.
There were people who were very much opposed to it, though. I believe that.
Well, I'm sure, and that's a B, I believe that is a B too.
The landowner in back was opposed to it, that owned the property in back.
I think if that were a project, if you were coming forward with a project.
I think that it's incumbent on us to think about citizens of Picousin.
I mean, we want to, we want a revenue base, and I'm all for that, because I know this is a community. It's moving away from that, clearly, but previously was known as a bedroom community because it was virtually no business. And so I am all, like Bonnie, I'm all for business propositions to come into the city and create revenue and be a good partner with the city, but at the same time, I think we owe the citizens. I think we owe them our good judgment in recommending something of this magnitude when we heard the citizens' response to the apartments that had been moved up next to the road. And so when I see that, and I think, okay, we're coming down this road, and we're gonna see this, and then we're gonna turn left on With Creek, and then we're gonna see that, you know, I wonder how the citizens are reacting to that.
I'm just a little concerned about the size of it, for that lot. And I, and I just don't, I can't tell you that you can make it work. I can't tell you that, make it work, so it's financially feasible. But the concern is definitely the, you know, the size for that size lot, for me. Other than that, I'd love to see you be there.
And so I have been quiet, because I've been taking all in, and I'm very familiar throughout my career with 90,000 square foot buildings. I mean, I know the massive size of it and what that entails, and I think that I mirror kind of the, it's, that's a huge frontage, and that changes the entire feel of that section of town. It's not like we're looking at, so I was in Reston, Virginia, for many years, and there was a lot of mixed use, where the first floor was retail and restaurant and coffee shops, where there could be gathering places, and then you had the business or industrial above it. But I saw that go from a hotel and a couple buildings to every single green spot, right up to the sidewalk taken. So that is what concerns me right there with that lot, and that massive a building on that, you know, three stories, and it's a phenomenal building. It's beautiful for the renderings, and, you know, it looked amazing, but it really takes the whole part, you know, the B2 district is for the retail and the things that Thomas listed. And this is a massive building on a square that doesn't fall into that feeling of the district, so.
Do you have a motion?
I would make a motion. Proposal, as presented.
Is there a second?
All right. Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Inman?
Aye.
Chairwoman, the conditional use permit for Graham Real Estate is denied with a vote.
Recommend denial, yes.
Recommend denial, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Oh, no problems, no problem. Thank you. Thank you. Seeing it is a beautiful building, though. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you. And with that, we're going to move to the next public hearing, which is a request for a conditional use permit by MedExpress Ambulance Service, DBA Legacy EMS Inc., for the operation of a private ambulance service to be located at 538 With Creek Road, Zone B2 Business Commercial, Tax Map Parcel 18-1-59. Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allow me one second to switch PowerPoints. Yes, ma'am, as you just stated, the second conditional use permit, for your consideration, for recommendation, is from MedExpress Ambulance Service Incorporated, doing business as Langley EMS Incorporated. The reason that the conditional use permit is necessary is that private and/or non-emergency ambulance services are not permitted within the city by right, and can only operate upon the issuance of a conditional use permit. This is a proposed site that I'm sure all of you are familiar with, 538 With Creek Road, Tax Map Parcel 18-TAC-1-TAC-59, which is Zone B2 Business Commercial. Proposed site, here's the aerial, again, I'm sure you're all familiar with. That's a Playtime Learning Center to the south. The recommended conditions, Madam Chair, there are seven. The first being that at no time shall more than two ambulances be stored on-site. And quite honestly, Madam Chair, members of the commission, that is why this is before you, because the business desired to operate with the ambulances on-site and take calls from that building, not necessarily serve as solely a professional office where their administrative staff and medics would work, be based from. The second condition is that no employee shall take quarters on-site, nor should sleeping accommodations be provided. That should, Madam Chair, I will kindly recommend, should be, should be changed to a shall, that is my fault. The third is that all signage shall be subject to architectural review, it would be anyways, wouldn't make it explicitly clear. The fourth condition is that the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, et cetera. The fifth is that if the use is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit shall become null and void. The sixth condition is that the service shall remain non-emergency, and shall only operate with contracted clients. I'll speak about that in a second. And of course, the seventh is that city councilor deserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. The applicant, it's a company actually based in Louisiana, and they do contracts with the federal government for non-emergency ambulances, ambulance services. And this one in particular has a contract with Langley Air Force Base to provide non-emergency transport services from, from, from the base to other facilities. And like I mentioned, the reason for the permit is because the ambulances, a maximum of two recommended by staff, will be stored on-site, and the calls to the base will be taken from there. The applicant expressed that that was a requirement of their contract, that the office be located off the base, and they are seeking your recommended approval to operate at 538 With Creek Road. I did receive a call from one adjacent property owner who was supportive of the application, and I think it's important to note that, given the administrative and professional nature of the building, the city manager agreed to allow them to operate in an interim time period from their request per a lease agreement and the start of a lease with the building owner until council makes a decision on the CUP next month. And we, at this point, have received no citizen complaints related to the operation of the business. Staff is recommending approval with those conditions, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is this limited just to Langley Field, or?
The condition is that it's limited to contract, contracted clients. The applicant currently, Langley Air Force Base is who their contract is with. You know, the condition is there, of course, to allow them to provide services to contracted clients, but the nature of their business is primarily with the government. So, like I said, the condition is there, but I don't believe it's their intention to expand services to the general public, and I think it's that contract with Langley Air Force Base that brought them here.
And as far as two vehicles, there's one, one and two vehicles. I went by there today, they were parked.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
I guess they're in that, that unit, if you will.
Yes, ma'am. They're in the front unit, there at the building, and we, they've expressed to us that they're, they have no intention to store more than two, but we thought it was necessary to make it a condition of the permit. I don't think that entire parking lot occupied by ambulances would be desirable, but I, we staff things to as appropriate, and that's why we've made the condition.
So if they were to park more than that, one of you from this office would be unpacking them?
If they were to violate a condition of the conditional use permit, there would be a violation process, and then council could decide to revoke, they could revoke the permit. Yes, ma'am?
So are they maintaining an office in that unit?
Yes, ma'am.
They're just maintaining an office, and they have two ambulances parked outside contract?
Yes, ma'am. They have, they've expressed they don't typically have more than four employees present at any time. We thought it was necessary to include the condition that no employee shall take quarters or sleeping accommodations be provided. That does, that would almost allow them to operate outside of the extent of what the B2 allows. They were amicable to that, but typically, it's a few clerical or administrative staff and a couple, you know, paramedics who work shifts.
So, Thomas, they, will they have staff there 24 hours a day?
I believe they will have paramedics there, but not staying, they've expressed that they do not work 24-hour shifts, they won't be sleeping there. When they're not running calls, they will be there doing, I'll say, administrative duties, reports, paperwork.
They will be working overnight.
But I think, I think there are services available overnight. And to that, to that point, they've expressed to us that they will not use light sirens, emergency equipment, and that's, you know, in the sixth, that the service shall remain But I believe they will, yes, have paramedics on-site overnight, whether that's seven days a week or not, I'm not sure, but I will think, I'll say more days than not.
Am I right in understanding that the daycare is on side of this, or is that one building, is that a building removed?
What's that?
The building removed.
Yeah, it's, it's a, the building below this one is Playtime Learning Center.
Camera shop, a camera, isn't it?
The building to the north is the camera shop.
The north.
And then, right above that is the flower shop.
Quite frankly, I don't see any difference in it coming out of there, or coming out of our apartment, or, you know, there's no curries and things of that nature.
Does it have any impact on the other businesses in the parking in the area? Because you look at ambulances, and typically, they're hot bit more than one parking spot.
Right. I do believe they fit in the parking spots available to them, but, you know, certainly the owner of the building hasn't expressed concern for the parking spots, but I think that kind of falls in line with only allowing the storage of two, you know, kind of the forethought to prevent that in the event, you know, there is disagreement in the future with the shared parking of that lot.
Two ambulance parking, and then four to six staff at a time?
Three to four, is what the applicant listed in their application.
Six spots.
You could conceive about six at any given time, but, you know, of course, their administrative staff are probably only there during, what I'll say, normal business hours.
Thomas, I don't know if I'm missing a page in this packet, because page one is the application for conditional use.
I do see, I do see what you're looking at.
I flipped through this like 10 times.
Yeah, I did too, and I am not sure how that got in there wrong. I can pull up my staff memo for you, if you'll indulge me for a second.
Thomas, as we move through this, they will be vetted as far as being licensed to provide type of service in the state of Virginia?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that's, kind of falls in line with the overarching condition that they comply with all state and federal regulations. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna step out and get you a couple copies of that memo.
In the agenda packet, there's of the storage warehouse, it's not the ambulance, but I think that was in our electronic copy. think that was in our electronic copy. I think so.
Any storage under the ambulance memo?
Okay. six, the service shall remain non-emergency and shall only operate with contracted clients. As such, the service shall not utilize emergency lights or sirens within city limits, just to put down a clear fraction.
I don't see why you couldn't.
And it might be redundant, I know, but...
It's a little redundant, but I think it's clear. I mean...
Thank you.
Actually, as I look through these other conditions, I think that would probably be a good addition. Thomas, while you were out, we were just talking about clarifying condition number six, where we say, service shall remain non-emergency and shall only operate with contracted clients. As such, there'll be no emergency lighting or...
Right.
Any other questions for Thomas?
I don't know if this is the obvious answer or not, but just clarifying, so they are, it is transport, they leave here, no lights, no sirens, no patients.
Right.
They go to Langley, they pick up, they transport to whatever other location, they return, no lights, no sirens, no patients.
That's correct.
So there's no medical care being given within Pecosin?
No, they're only to, per their application, contracted client is Langley Air Force Base, and they're not really to service the public.
At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anybody in the audience would like to address the commission on this application, and seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And any other discussion, comments?
I saw him sitting there today when I went by. I mean, it had been limited, but I didn't turn around and go look. He's under the building, so if it's an issue with parking, he'll have to deal with it.
I just would like to ask how, Councilman Emmett, with your, number six, does that have to be amended before we do motion?
What you could, what anybody could do is make a recommendation to approve with the change that number two should be shall instead of should, and number six, you can add the verbage, "As such, the service shall not utilize emergency lights or sirens within city limits." And with those two changes, then you can recommend approval. I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'm going to make a motion. Yeah, okay, so I'm going to make the motion to approve, to recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the changes as follows. Condition two shall say, "No employee shall take quarters on site nor shall sleeping accommodations be provided." Condition number six, to be amended to say, "The service shall remain non-emergency and shall only operate with contracted clients. As such, the service shall not utilize emergency lights or sirens within city limits."
I'll second that.
Commissioner Ruda?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairman Emmett?
Aye.
The recommendation to City Council pass?
All right. Okay. Communications and correspondence, Thomas, what's happening next month?
I, thank you, Madam Chair. First, let me apologize for that memo slip up, but next month, you will have one, possibly two, conditional use permits to consider a recommendation of, fairly positive, it'll be two, but no for certain, it will be at least one. Other than that, we have the constrained capital improvements plan to be presented for your consideration on the same evening.
Is that, I'm sorry, is for the constrained capital improvements, is that going to be a work session or a public hearing?
We will hold the public hearing that evening. If it's your desire to have a work session, we can certainly accommodate that, but that is prerogative.
Do you know, would we be able to get a copy of that constrained capital improvement plan maybe a week prior to the meeting, or is that not available?
I'm actively working on that, and I don't want to promise you anything, because my work is still subject to the okay of people much higher than I, but I believe, I believe I could get it to you, you know, of course, at the very latest, the close of business Friday, but I plan to have it finished, I'll say, sooner, but, you know, with, well, we're off two days this week and the Thanksgiving holiday, we could lose a few days before that meeting, but I will, I will do my very best to get it to you early in that week, because it'd be done by then. I'm working on it pretty hard.
There's a lot in those. It's nice to have those, because there's a lot of information in those. That's a...
There is, yeah. I plan on having that near completion by the end of next week, so it shouldn't be a promise. I mean, it shouldn't be a problem, but it shouldn't be a promise, because I don't make promises I can't keep. But I will do my very best to get it to you at the beginning of the week prior.
Would we need a work session for the CUP?
I don't think so. I mean, it's no secret, I can tell you what they relate to. One is for a tourist home, or short-term rental, or serviced accommodation, whatever you may want to call it, to be...
Airbnb, are you saying? Like, something like that?
That wouldn't be the phrase, but yeah, it would be something that could be put on Airbnb, but it is a short-term rental. Serviced accommodation, our code speaks to tourist home. That's what the applicant has requested a conditional use permit for. The other is for, the other that may be complete, is for a storage yard, and that is to be located next to Riggins. The tourist home is the one-story home next to, I'll say, the 7-Eleven with the gas pumps that recently has been renovated and remodeled. I'm sure you've all noticed that. So, we, like, again, again, we can accommodate a work session for both of those items, if that's your desire. If so, certainly six o'clock, if you want to have one on the CCIP and one or both conditional use permits.
You say the storage yard next to Riggins Motor Company?
Yes, ma'am. It's proposed next to, there's a small lot beside it that was the former home of the Tom Hunt store.
They want to do a storage yard there?
Yes, ma'am. It's a gentleman who owns, I believe he's, I believe the only company he owns is a pressure washing company, and he is seeking approval for a storage yard at that lot to house his trucks and business equipment.
Do we have, is, do we have...
Are we needing any restrictions on short-term rentals in the city?
Our code does not currently speak to short-term rentals, quite frankly, because it's a very new thing, and the whole state, Commonwealth, is, localities everywhere are really now starting to adopt language, and I can tell you, it is coming to you in due time when we get into the zoning ordinance after the first of the year, and this will provide a good segue into that discussion. The code does define tourist home, but tourist home is not permitted in any district, and...
That's not really what those things are.
It's not necessarily how we would, how we will define short-term rentals, but it is the language that I'll say is pertinent now.
Assuming it were approved, how would that be affected? Would it be grandfathered if, I don't know...
If we...
If the short-term rental shook out?
Go ahead, Lyle.
The way we've been permitting what you would call Airbnb is we've been looking at the part of the zoning ordinance that talks about a family, and a family is defined as no more than four individuals who are unrelated within a household. That's been really the only mechanism we've had to halfway address the issue of Airbnbs. What we will be doing with the zoning ordinance rewrite is that we will be adopting languages that talks about transient occupancies and short-term rentals and things of that nature. As Thomas mentioned, this has become a hot topic, basically amongst planning institutions all across the state, and it's gotten to the point where we need to actually address it, instead of just sort of turning the other cheek, so we will be doing that. It also has implications for the commissioner of revenue as to how they assess their various fees for those type of uses. Anyway, stay tuned, we'll be...
I think Virginia Beach just adopted something whereby...
Virgin...
Right?
They have, and they have actually had to hire full-time short-term rental inspectors, but, you know, obviously, we're not Virginia Beach, you know, without getting...
Jordan County's adopted something similar.
Without getting too far into the lot, it is, there's obviously the home on the lot, but that is a B2 lot, so it's not exactly, I won't say it's similar to, you know, someone's house in a residential neighborhood that they want a conditional use permit, you know, the short-term rental. So, you know, we'll talk about those details, you know, next month.
That's been a residential one in a B2 zoning, right?
So I guess that's a good segue as to whether or not we want a work session. So it sounds like all three of these, and the constrained capital improvement plan, tourist home, and possibly the storage yard, do we want to start our discussion at six, maybe with the constrained capital improvement and be able to kind of discuss that, or, and it's kind of sixes, just whether we want to start earlier, discuss a little bit beforehand, and then have a public hearing, or do we want to start at seven and then go later?
I like the idea to just end the work session.
I agree. Just clarification purposes, sorry, as we go into this, so we're going to have a conditional use permit for allowing a house to be a tourist house yet. We don't have any guidelines yet, but the guidelines are coming down the line when planning and zoning get changed in 2023?
That is definitely an accurate interpretation of what's happening, and that is what localities are facing with this, you know, with these applications and without language that's exactly caught up, but, you know, as you all know, anyone in the city can apply for a conditional use permit for anything in any district, basically at any time, so we can't deny the acceptance of the application, and we will recommend staff conditions that we feel are necessary, you know, to, I'll say, accommodate the use, or to allow the existence of the use and the operation of, but you're not wrong on your timeline, because we are, our short-term rental language will come with our zoning ordinance change, you know, as you know, we've, you all with us have been instrumental in updating the city code, and it just felt that the zoning ordinance was going to be next year, and that's what we will get to, and we don't have the commissioner up new language, it's transient occupancy tax language yet either, but that is also coming, which won't go into effect until July 1st, but, like I say, it's all kind of snowballing into next year.
Is it possible of the city, like, I just worry that as we talk about things and we look at this conditional use permit ahead of anything else, does it set us up for any precedent that then is going to turn around, and we're going to have a bit of a issues down the line, because prior to having the new regulations or new, that we've gone down this route with this particular one, and then someone a year from now says, well, you let them do that?
I will tell you that it is our intention as staff to almost craft the conditions of this conditional use permit to reflect what we will also recommend in short-term rental language, and of course, the use would be followed per the CUP, you know, but a condition, for instance, a condition is that, is going to be that once a transient occupancy tax is adopted, subject to that. So I honestly think that the CUP will almost act as a framework for the short-term rental language. You know, if we need, if you seek an opinion from the city attorney, we could certainly get you an answer, but at the very least, I actually think this will provide us a good opportunity to have the discussion even before we get into amending the zoning ordinance.
I'm just wondering, why are they coming for a CUP? I mean, I know there are numerous homes in Pecosin that are on the Airbnb list, and there's no requirement on them whatsoever, so why would they come for a CUP? I mean, why wouldn't they just sit on Airbnb?
They, I can tell you this, we are complaint-driven, and, you know, as far as Airbnb site is concerned and others of the sort, one day to the next, a house may be there, a house may not, but this applicant, it's seeking the permission for short-term rentals, specifically 30 days or less, and to be very honest with you, I think once we work through code language and the commissioner of revenues language... the commissioner of revenues language, um, we will be more proactive and, and permit, um, them throughout the city. It, it is. It's a, uh, it, it's a hot topic throughout the Commonwealth. And, um, everybody is taking the punches as, as they come on this because it's, it's, it's very new, um, and very popular. So, we're gonna act on it pretty, pretty fast after, after the first of the year.
Anything else?
So, when will the meeting be? And then will we want a work session?
We, that meeting date is December 5th. We'll have a work session at six to discuss conditional use permits and the constrained capital improvement plan.
Anything else, Thomas?
I, I have nothing. Thank you.
Lolly?
I, uh, I think about the only thing I've mentioned to this point is that the subdivision ordinance is going before the city council on the 14th. Uh, you all took a look at it last month, actually, the month before that, too. So, uh, so we are moving forward with that. Um, that's about all I got for now.
Christine?
Connie? I do have several things.
Yes.
Number one, I'd like to thank Lolly and Thomas for hastily having to give those calculations for us. Appreciate it. They have a bearing on, uh, my clarification. Appreciate it. Um, also, I certainly want to apologize for my tardiness, had an unscheduled circumstance which delayed my arrival in sending y'all into a pack and wouldn't have a core. I'm hoping, I'm in hopes that my past record will keep me in good stead.
You're fine, Lolly.
All right. Uh, and also, the final thing, I'd like to, I hope everybody has a nice Thanksgiving because of December 5th. And at that time, we, we'll all, our wallets will all be a little less because of our donation to the city.
Great.
It, it was a good discussion on the, uh, on the storage units. It was a dilemma for me.
It really was.
But thank you for, thank you for the information input. Some of our decisions are not the...
I'll just second what you were gonna say.
And, and one last thing. Now, if we're going according to this clock up here, I think we're on overtime pad. I'll be looking for my checks. Help me, help me with my debt.
But, yeah, I just want to say that, that is a tough, it was a tough call. And, and there's definitely pros and cons. And it's, it's really great to hear everyone's input on that. It was very helpful. So, thank you. With that, we're gonna adjourn for the night.